Join, uh, this is the Homewood Planning Commission, Thursday, February 2nd, 2021. Right, I'm getting a little.
Yeah, somebody's got their speakers on and they're unmuted. If you can either mute or turn your speakers off, one or the other. Go ahead, Jeff.
Okay, great. Uh, so thank you very much, um, uh, for everyone joining tonight. Um, so I would like to call the meeting to order. Um, can we get a roll call, Fred?
Yes, all right. Jeffrey Foster.
Here.
Chief Hill. Mr. Cron Teres.
Here.
Mr. Riddle.
Here.
Mr. Roberts.
Here.
Ms. Andress.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mr. Woods.
I'm here. I was muted, sorry.
All right. All right.
And so Nick is not here?
No, he did not respond and he had indicated, as I said earlier, that he had a, uh, conflict tonight, so.
Yep, okay, no worries, no worries. Um, all right, thank you for calling, uh, this to order. Um, first item up is minutes for approval. Uh, Fred, I think circulated, uh, these, uh, yesterday, maybe?
Actually, this morning.
This morning, that's what it was. Sorry, Fred, thank you very much. I have not had a chance to review these and therefore I'd like to make a, uh, motion to, uh, carry them over to next month. Um.
Mr. Chairman, before we do that, um, Mr. Chairman, before we do that, I'd like to, uh, to make a motion to, uh, to reconsider and delay the meeting tonight, uh, because it violates, uh, the bylaws of the planning commission. That specifically, the read as follows. The agenda, along with information pertinent to each scheduled public hearing, and other business matters should be delivered to each planning commission member at least 10 days before the meeting. That way, allowing sufficient opportunity for the commission to visit each site, to review the cases and make decisions. All files and records of the commission should be open and made available to the public. So based on this, um, my motion is to, uh, delay the meeting until, uh, sometime next week.
Okay, so just, uh, just to restate the motion by Mr. Crontaris, based on the bylaws, he is requesting to postpone the meeting to, to a, for a special called meeting, uh, the second week of February, um, based on section, what section is this? This is section.
It's, uh, it's rubber rules of order, you know, section B.
Uh, well, it's our bylaws, section B, uh, under section 59, regular meeting agenda, right?
Page 11.
Mm-hmm. Yep, no, I, I found it, I see it, John. So, uh, Mr. Cron Teres has made a motion to postpone the meeting until the second week of February. It would be, uh, I assume.
Yes.
PDA meets on the 9th? Is that correct?
No, they, they meet on the 4th. They meet the day after tomorrow.
No, be postponed by a week is essentially what Mr. Crontaris, I guess, is requesting i- in his motion.
I will sit there myself on, I will be in Montgomery with the mayor and with the council all day on the 9th. I'm sure I'll be able to be in front of the devices. If I, if I.
And it could be, we can, especially, we just need to have a 72-hour window for staff to post the special called meeting if there is a second passes. So we have a motion on Mr. Cron Teres's to postpone. Do we have a second?
A second. It's Wilson.
Uh, but Mr. Wilson has seconded the motion to postpone. Um, Fred, would you call the, uh, motion to order unless there's any further debate on the motion?
Uh, this is Stuart Roberts. I would say that I, I had plenty of time to review the information provided, notwithstanding the delay in getting it to us, was, it's not that much information to review.
So Stuart, what, I'm sorry, you cut out on my end. What did you say?
Oh, I'm sorry. I was just saying, you asked if there was any more debate, uh, before we vote. I was just going to say that I had plenty of time to review, um, the packet and.
All right.
They're, they're, to proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Mr. Roberts indicates he had time to review his packet and so did Mr. Riddle, I believe. Um.
He did as well.
And Ms. Andress, all right. Any further debate on the request to postpone? There being none, Fred, would you call a vote?
All right. Mr. Cron Teres.
Yes.
Mr. Riddle.
No.
Mr. Roberts.
No.
Ms. Andress.
No.
Mr. Wilson.
No.
Mr. Woods.
No.
Mr. Foster.
Uh, no.
No. All right.
The motion to postpone, uh, does not pass, Mr. Cron Teres.
Okay, so, uh, we should scratch the items from the, from the bylaws?
No, so the, 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 the question now would be, based on our bylaws, we would need a, I believe, a.
It's a violation.
Correct.
Item B of the, uh.
Yeah.
Playing permission bylaws and rules of order.
So as part of rules of order, they can be suspended, I believe, with a two-thirds vote of the members.
You might want to bring it out.
Bring one out.
Uh, that was somebody else. Everybody else that's not a member, please keep yourself muted. Thank you.
Would, would that, uh, only apply to this particular meeting?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, wait, it, it, here's a question that I got too. Uh, if we are, if we are breaking the rules, then I absolutely do not want to break the rules. Uh, I, you know, so, or is that what we're saying we're doing? We're breaking the rules?
It's a, it's a bylaw. Yes, in essence, yes. Now you can suspend the bylaws, uh, well, that one for the mood to head, so.
It was not what the motion was made for. The motion was made.
Made to postpone, that's correct. So I'm trying to see here, I would think that, um.
So we'd have to make a motion to suspend.
Yes, for this meeting, I, I, that's my.
For this meeting.
I, I'm Stuart's lawyer. He may have a better interpretation of the Robert orders.
Um, no, I think that's right. I, but, and I'm happy to make a motion to suspend the rules, uh, to proceed.
Second.
Do we have any further debate on the motion to suspend rules for this meeting to proceed? For this meeting only? Okay, uh, Fred, will you call the roll?
Wait, wait, hold on. I couldn't, I was trying to say something, it was muted. So why would we make an exception for just one meeting? Help me understand that. I mean, that seems, that's a little odd to me.
We had a seven or six to one to move ahead with the meeting on the postponement.
Those were in discussion.
We're not in majority to postpone.
I'd just like to add, it's, I mean, I think the point is well made by Mr. Cron Tyres that we feel like we don't, didn't get our, uh, our packets in a timely fashion and, and they, we know that there was extenuating circumstances in the past, so I wonder if there's a way that we could, um, first note that and, and, uh, how, how we can address it and prove it in the future is maybe in question too, but, um, but, but for the time being, I'm also in favor of, of suspending to move forward if, if Mr. Crontaris feels like he can participate in the, in the, in the vote.
Any further debate on the motion to suspend the bylaws to proceed with the meeting? And I do take Mr. Wilson's point, uh, very much, and I know Fred, uh, and why did I discuss the timing of this, um, and the delivery of the packets, um, due to a series of circumstances. Uh, I, I think that they are well aware of it and will do everything in their power to address it, to ensure it does not happen again.
I mean, Mr. Chairman, I, I really, I really cannot understand, uh, why I had the, uh, the, uh, the requirement, uh, on Sunday to review this agenda that it was supposed to given to us, and I, I'm not saying that there was no reason for that. You know, that, that I have to do, to do the agenda like this. I mean, I hadn't got the time to review everything. I haven't gotten time to go over the documentation. I mean. Let me ask you a question. Why? Understand, I just cannot understand why the rest of the board members, the voting to bypass what the bylaw is saying about, uh, the delivery of the agenda.
No, and I'd like, I, I, I'd like to know from city, why that, why, this is the first time this has ever happened. Why were these things delivered yesterday to me? Yesterday afternoon, late, actually.
Yeah. Before the city, before Fred or Wyatt wants to answer, I'll answer your question, John. The bylaws say 10 days to allow for members to have adequate time to review cases and/or visits the sites. Um, I did that and I feel comfortable moving ahead with the vote. I won't speak to anyone else, but that's, that's my, my personal, uh, reasoning for moving ahead.
I agree with that. I felt the same way. I, I still would like to get back to the, uh, old way of no less than seven days. That's what I, we've always gotten them on the Tuesday prior to the meeting. Uh, it's, it seems that our, our packets have been arriving, uh, you know, at, at a later date, and I understand that there's, you know, the, the COVID and the people have been absent and all that, and I understand, and it was, uh, kind of troublesome this weekend to get all this done, but, uh, I did get it done.
So, so while, again, nobody has answered, why were these as late? This is the latest they've ever been. What was the issue?
Well, as I understood it.
I'll attempt to answer part of that. Uh, as, as Mr. Riddle indicated, we had, we had several people that were quarantining for the virus that were out and that forced, uh, some existing staff to do some work. Those people that were out, and so we could not process some of these as much as we'd like to forward. Additionally, there are at least two cases where we needed some adequate information in order to share with the planning commission. We didn't feel that we need, we needed that information before we submitted this information to the planning commission, that it was incomplete. And we tried for several days trying to get this information so that we could include it in the package. So, as I say, it got onto Friday, unfortunately, and, uh, that's why we went forward to, uh, send it electronically to at least get that into the hands of the planning commission and then to hand deliver those, uh, at the first opportunity after that on Monday. So it was a combination of, of issues that sort of caused the delay.
So, well, that, that, then that, that affects my decision because I'm hearing you say right now, there was some very important information that we got, and unfortunately, for business-wise, I've been able to look this stuff over. I'm, I'm handling PPP loans and extremely busy at the office right now and into the late in the evenings, and I was just able to review this stuff most of the afternoon, and I haven't had time to look at it, Fred.
Right. No, I'm speaking in terms of the sign, uh, information that initially we had some basic information of what was approved and we were trying to work through what the specific changes were so that we could include that information in your packet so that you'd be in a better position in your deliberations tonight to make those decisions. So, but that information was not readily available, and so we had to, uh, get that information from, uh, the sources that were needed. So that, that's just one example. But that was part of the delay in order that you would have that information before you tonight in order to help you make your decision.
Well, you know, Fred, Fred, if that, if that's the reason, which is a legitimate reason, why is your reason has to be accepted and my reason not be accepted? I mean, you had problems of doing it, which I understand. I'm not complaining about that, but you have to be, uh, you know, conscious about my situation that I hadn't had time enough to review it.
Yeah, John, to that point, uh, we do have a motion.
Well, I mean, you know, you'll, you'll do whatever you want to do, but this is not right. That's all I'm going to tell you. You know, go ahead and do whatever you want to do. I don't know why you're doing it that way, but go ahead and do it. It's not right. Yeah, I don't know. I cannot say whether it's legal or not legal, but as far as I'm concerned, it's not right. Uh, so whatever you want to do, you do, uh, are still going to be here and, uh, be part of the meeting.
Okay, is there any, uh, further question on the motion to suspend rule, the bylaw rule of 10 days? To move forward with the meeting of tonight? And require, this is an FYI, this requires a two-thirds, um, majority.
And for how long?
Postpone.
Okay.
The postpone has been voted on. We voted that down. So the motion is to move forward.
Correct.
Okay. So do we have a, uh, Fred, do you want to call, are there any other further comment on this?
I'd just like to clarify, the motion on the table that's been seconded is to suspend the bylaws for tonight's meeting. Correct?
For the timing of the delivery of packets, that is correct.
Just for, we're just.
Just, just for tonight.
Right.
That is, that is the motion. I am restating it for the record. The motion is to suspend the bylaw requirement of 10 days. Uh, so I believe now it was, I, I got my packet Friday, so would, you know, whatever that is, um, to allow the meeting on February 2nd to proceed. We have a motion and a second. Any further questions from any member? Okay, there being none, Fred, do you want to call the roll?
Yes, all right. Mr. Cron Teres.
No.
Mr. Riddle.
Yes.
Mr. Roberts.
Yes.
Ms. Andress.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
Mr. Woods.
No.
Mr. Foster.
Yes.
Five yes and two no.
Okay.
Jeff, my lawyer math says that's not two thirds.
Yeah, that's what I was about to say too. That's actually.
We're, uh, we're going to reconvene these 60 people, um, at some other point in time, so.
Yes.
We can, we can read another 30 pages.
Correct. Yeah. Um.
I apologize to everyone for wasting your time tonight.
So what we'll do then is, Fred, would you please look at the, uh, calendar for the week of, uh, February 8th?
Yes, right.
Okay, so that would put us, uh, that, I believe that Monday would be the first possible meeting. I believe there's a council meeting or subcommittee meetings on that Monday.
Uh, yes, there is. There's council meeting and it starts at 6 o'clock.
The meeting at Tuesday, Ms. Andress said she cannot attend, uh, because of travel related to the city. Um, so now we're looking at Wednesday, uh, potentially the 10th.
Okay.
Or, uh, Thursday, the 11th, I believe. I, I think that's probably the soonest this can get posted, because you'll have to post it tomorrow with a 72-hour notice. That would not leave enough time, I don't believe, for a Friday meeting.
Okay.
Okay. Well, okay, well, um, again, for those that have joined, the meeting has been, uh, will be rescheduled for the week of the 8th. Um, to discuss the agenda that was presented for Thursday, February 2nd at 6:00 PM. Uh, the note, the meeting will be posted 72 hours, uh, in advance on the city's website to comply with the state sunshine law. Uh, so please be on the lookout for that, um, later this week, early next.
Dude, uh, did you want to sign up a specific day? You said the week of the 8th.
I, I personally am fine with doing it on the 10th, if that's the soonest it can be done. I will not speak to other committee members, uh, or commission members without that.
Good with that.
I'm good with that.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Hey, guys.
For me.
I was just wondering, uh, in my, I, I, I don't, I guess, I probably don't understand the, the rules, but five divided by seven, that, that is two thirds, correct?
I thought it was.
71%.
Oh. I also said that was my lawyer math, so, um, I'm glad someone.
Oh.
Thought I was missing a roll or something. I, I, I hated to speak up because I thought I probably was wrong there.
Okay. Well, thank you for catching that. I didn't think about that. Yeah, no, I was thinking.
I was sitting here wondering what the hell.
Okay. All right, well then, I'm sorry, take that back. We will now move forward with the motion to suspend, um, bylaws for tonight, passed. Uh, thank you, Green Rock. Um, all right, so moving forward, um, minutes for approval. Uh, before, uh, Mr. Cron Teres's motion, there were minutes that Fred delivered today. I personally did not have a chance to look these over. Um, I don't know if any other commission member had time or would, uh, care to make a motion one way or the other, related to this.
I read them. I, I'm be glad to make a motion to approve, uh, and suspense on the reading. Uh, if anyone has any corrections, they can, uh, uh, bring them forward, I guess.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Um, Fred, will you call the, uh, roll on the dispensing of the reading of the minutes and approval?
All right. Mr. Cron Teres.
Yes.
Mr. Riddle.
Yes.
Mr. Roberts.
Yes.
Ms. Andress.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
Mr. Woods.
Yes.
Mr. Foster.
I'm going to abstain as I did not actually get a chance to read them.
Take a look at, uh, the chat. Vicky put something in there. I'm assuming she can't talk. She puts, and they're just be sure that everything's right before you proceed.
Well, that's what I was wondering, two thirds of the total, right? So, uh, let's see, so if we had five and four, yeah. I don't think it's, um. Well, no, two thirds of seven is, is, you know, four, something, and we have five.
Yeah, my math shows that we're good. I just wanted you to make sure with Vicky because she had put that in her, that's all.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. My, 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 yeah, if it was, um, right, two thirds of the, the members present is required to suspend, just to clarify. Um, and two thirds of seven is 4.6.
That's correct.
Okay, all right, so we have five, so we're moving.
I just wanted to double check, just to be sure.
Yep, no, I understand. I know. Uh, it's my fault. Mr. Roberts threw me off. His lawyer math.
Yeah, I prefaced it.
You, you did, you did preface it. That is true. Uh, so moving right along, communication report from the chairman and the vice chairman, I will make a comment related to, uh, the mural, the draft mural text. Um, there was a meeting last night of the planning and development subcommittee of the council that is chaired by, um, uh, Councilwoman Andress, uh, related to the murals. This also has to do with edits to the roof sign text of, I think, the West Homewood District specifically, and Ms. Smith can correct me if I'm wrong on that. Uh, Ms. Andress, do you want to make a comment to the board, I mean, the commission, about the, um, next step related to the mural?
Yes, I'm going to reach back out to our consultant that we had, uh, last year, who helped with the sign ordinance, um, you know, placemakers. It was the, uh, sister, uh, Hazel, and I can't remember her last name, and I'm going to reach out to her on that. Um, just, and, and what we're looking for, I think, is, is a, um, way to move forward with some kind of regulation in place that doesn't regulate content. Um, and, and we're trying to, uh, in my mind, we're trying to kind of thread the needle and strike the balance between, uh, allowing some form of public art without, um, being a violation of a Supreme Court order that says you cannot, um, dictate content. Does that sound right?
Yeah, that is correct. We can't dictate content. Uh, size, position, and possibly types of materials can be regulated. Um, so those are things that we want to learn a little bit more about. This has come up a couple times, but given that there are at least three murals or public displays of art, this is something that we want to make sure that we're addressing with staff, uh, from a city perspective, so that we're not, um, well, you know, essentially that we're consistent citywide. And so, um, uh, in the interim, I'm going to refer the document, uh, that I was pre- provided by staff to our planning commission subcommittee to review and comment on. And, um, if you would, please return those review edits comments, uh, following your next meeting, which I think is on the 16th. Um, back to Ms. Andress myself, so that we can, uh, discuss those.
We will actually not be meeting on the Monday. Are you talking about that Monday, the 15th? That's President's Day, so I think, is that, is that right?
Yeah, that may be President's Day, but the, uh, planning commission subcommittee would be that Tuesday.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, 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 no. Yeah, that's what I was saying. If, if, if the, the meeting is scheduled for the Tuesday, the subcommittee meeting, if they can review and, uh, make comments, I think it may be helpful just, uh, that way, but, you know, either before or after you talk to, um, the consultant on the sign.
I would love that, and we will meet again, I believe, on the 22nd in committee. And although that will be a short night because we're also going into council. So my point is, anything that you can share with me, any of your opinions, I'd love to hear them and have that available for my next committee meeting.
Yeah, perfect.
Thank you.
And thanks in advance to our subcommittee, uh, members on that. Uh, moving forward, uh, old business, item number one, uh, case RS 210101 508 Tamworth. At the request of the applicant, it has been carried over to March 2nd. So there will be no case, so for anyone here that was here for 508 Tamworth, uh, the case will tentatively be sked, would be heard on March 2nd. Uh, moving right along, new business, uh, RS 2102-01 214 Edward Boulevard. This is, uh, applicant is Clayton Mobley. Um, he is all, he and his wife Rachel are also the property owners, and his request for approval of a resurvey to become, combine five parcels, five lots into one parcel, one lot. Are the Mobleys here?
Um, my name's Joseph Miller. I'm the surveyor. I'm here representing the Mobleys. Can you hear me?
Uh, we can, Mr. Miller?
Yes.
And, and would you, uh, also state your, uh, address for the record, as well as the, uh, nature of your request?
Yes, uh, Joseph Miller, MTTR Engineers, 2500 South Lake Park, Suite 100 Hoover 35244. Um, this is the, 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 the pink house at the corners, southeast corner of Roseland and Edgewood. And currently it sits on five lots, and, and to, to move forward with the plans that they would like to, to implement, we need to resurvey it into one large lot, and that's, that's the purpose of this resurvey is to, to make it, instead of being five single, single lots, one single lot for a single family residence.
Okay, um, thank you very much, uh, Mr. Miller. I'll, I think you just disappeared.
No, I'm here.
There you are, there you are. Okay, there you are. Thank you very much. Um, this is a public meeting. We're going to open comments up to the public based on this request for the resurvey at 214 Edward Boulevard. I do ask that you keep your comments, uh, pithy and to the point. Um, two to three minutes ideally to give folks enough time to, uh, speak, and then also for, um, uh, you, you know, this is, they're. you know, this is, there are other neighbors here that want to join in and, and comment. So is there any comment from the public related to this? And please use the chat feature or the raise your hand feature or something along those lines. Brian, you see anything? I don't see anything.
I do not see any, no.
All right, we're going to close the public portion, so no further comment from the members of the public, are there any questions from members of the planning commission related to this re-survey, as a reminder, I think we actually saw this, this, this lot two years ago, and actually I think split it from one to five.
Correct, so we're going back to the original.
Correct, it meets all definitions for neighborhood preservation district based on the size, and in case there was any question related to that, there's not an issue, as, as it is NPD there. So that's not a concern, so it does meet the, the minimum, it actually exceeds the minimum requirements of our zoning book quite by a lot. And so if there's a, are there any comments, questions from any members of the planning commission related to this case?
If not, I'll make a motion.
Okay, we have Mr. Riddle. State your motion.
I'll make a motion to approve RS 21-02-01 Lot Survey 5 into 1.
All right, we have a motion from Mr. Riddle to approve the re-survey from five lots to one lot, and I believe I heard a second from Ms. Andrus.
Yes.
Thank you very much, we have a motion and a second, Fred, would you call the roll?
Mr. Cronteras.
You're muted, John. Cronteras votes yes on the re-survey.
All right, Mr. Riddle.
Yes.
Mr. Roberts.
Yes.
Ms. Andrus.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
Mr. Woods. Mr. Woods.
Yes.
And lastly, Mr. Foster.
Yes, that is, I believe, 7-0, so your request to re-survey from five parcels, five lots to one parcel, one lot, has passed.
Thank you very much.
Very much, all right. Moving on, case 80210202225 State Farm Parkway, the applicant show engineering for CYBMN.
Point of order.
For approval.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman, this is Alton Parker.
I can't.
I don't, you, there is no way, have you gotten a legal opinion on whether you can waive the bylaws?
We are governed by Roberts Rules of Order.
That's correct, and Roberts Rules of Order states you cannot violate your bylaws with a motion to suspend the rules.
Suspend the bylaws, I'm looking at the.
There is no such thing, please look it up.
Well, I've got it right here, and it says suspend at least two thirds of votes cast by persons entitled to vote.
To do what?
Suspend the rules.
Correct, not the bylaws.
Or extend limits of debate.
As long as it does not violate the bylaws, this violates the bylaws.
Where is?
Everything you do tonight is not going to be done.
I appreciate your point, I, I do.
Check it out.
I'm not disagreeing with you, I'm trying to find this myself, I don't have, I'm having to look at this online because I left my rulebook at the house.
I got it, I, I did look it up.
No, no, I, I trust you, I found the two thirds is what I'm looking at, I'm trying to again.
I agree with that, if you have a rule, but you cannot waive your bylaws of the organization without following the bylaws of the organization in order to amend them, it's that simple.
No, 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 I, I don't disagree.
I'm just, I'm sorry, it took me four or five minutes to get that put together.
No, again, no issue from my standpoint on that. As long as we're conducting this correctly.
What's the possibility of contacting Mr. Kendrick?
I do not have his phone number.
James, I'm, I'm calling him now.
Thank you.
I'm not sure. According to our bylaws, under the thing, the rules may be amended at any meeting by majority mode of members at the meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I'm not getting an answer from Michael's phone.
Okay. Okay. While we resolve this, it may be apropos to take a 15 minute recess. Do we have anyone from the commission that considers that?
I make a motion, we take a 15 minute recess.
We have a motion and a second to recess for 15 minutes to, to resolve this seemingly discordance between our bylaws and the point of order raised by the attendee related to Roberts Rules of Order regarding bylaws. Do we have a vote on that? On favor, say aye.
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 Thank you very much, we'll be back in 15 minutes.
I have Mike's, Mike's opinion.
I can't hear you, Jeff.
I'm not a trained Roberts Rules of Order attorney, and so until I can talk to Mike and get clarification on this, because I, I'm just not a Roberts Rules of Order attorney. And so I can talk to him and get his opinion, unless there's an objection from a commission member, I'm just going to continue the meeting to next Wednesday at 6:00 PM, as we had previously thought we would maybe do, which would give, I think, the staff in the city enough time to post, not post, but to update the city website with the Zoom meeting, 72 hours, but we'll continue this meeting unless there's an objection
Jeff.
From the other commission members. And so. Members back.
Do you hear Vicky, Jeff?
No, hey.
Hey Jeff.
Yeah.
Okay, you hear me now?
I, I can.
Okay.
Hear.
Yes, yes, I heard from Mike, he said he believes that is correct, that you can suspend Roberts Rules of Order, but not your own bylaws, he said in abundance of caution, that what we should do is exactly what you just said, continue the meeting until, to a date certain, which we discussed next Wednesday at 6:00. So he said that would be the safest thing to do.
Okay, and I will try and get in touch with him to get clarification on this as well after the meeting. So unless there's an objection from the other planning commission members, are they back yet?
I'm back, I have a question, what does that do with the first case that we heard tonight and the vote we took?
We're going to, as we're continuing the meeting, will not be a news, a continuance. That is, that's why I want to continue it, since we've already technically voted on that one, you know, I, I don't I don't know, you know, to, to use at abundance of caution, you know, we'll continue the meeting to next Wednesday.
Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
According to the Robert Rules of Law, bylaws cannot be suspended even by unanimous vote.
Sure. I don't disagree with that, I don't disagree with reading that rule, I'm reading the, the copy of the bylaws I have, says the rules may be amended at any time by a commission by majority of the members attending, and so until I get clarification from Mike or some Roberts Rules of Order attorney, out of abundance of caution, I think we should just continue the meeting. And then we can address the, the, the issue on Wednesday, the 10th. Unless there's an objection from other planning commission members. Any objection?
Mr. Foster, I'll make a, I'll make a motion to do that, continue till next Wednesday.
All right, we'll continue to next Wednesday barring objection, and there being none.
Second, Wilson.
Thank you, we are going to move to continue the meeting with a motion and a second till Wednesday, the 10th. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right.
Ken, can you go ahead and make an announcement though for interested parties to be sure and check the city's website for further information about that meeting? Just go ahead.
Yeah, well, Fred, you think you just probably took my thunder on that, but yeah, we will, please, please check the please check the city's website for the updated continuing meeting.
At 6:00.
At 6:00 on the 10th.
Thank you.
Yep.
So that, so, and so that I can relay the correctly, those, especially any, any cases that were discussed, whether they were passed or anything, they need to come back next week, correct?
That is the, the one case that we reviewed of the re-survey, as the meeting was continued, out again, out of, to use Miss Smith's term, an abundance of caution, they should, they should join the meeting.
Okay, I just want to make sure that I let, let everybody know.
And again, I apologize, I, you know, I'm not a, unfortunately, a trained Roberts Rules of Order expert, and so my reading of our bylaws and then the order. So I appreciate Mr. I'm not sure, I think it was Alton?
Alton Parker.
Oh yeah, thank you very much for pointing that out, I, I do appreciate you making sure we're doing everything correctly, so thank you very much. I don't know if he's still here or not. No, okay.
Jeff, I'm sorry, this is Stuart, I, I didn't realize that that I, I was on mute for a little while, couldn't hear what you guys were saying, I I, and we've already decided to adjourn, I do think, looking back at it, I think we have a very good argument that that the, the rules about distribution are really rules of order more so than bylaws, even if they're contained in the bylaws. But I certainly understand and respect the vote to continue just out of abundance of caution, I don't want to.
Yeah, I, I appreciate your point on that, Stuart, I, you know, thanks for you know, coming back and, 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 you know, looking into this briefly during the recess, I do appreciate it.
Breaking up, Jeff.
Yeah, I noticed that, regrets to anyone that's joined that we haven't gotten to be able to get to your case tonight, but we will continue the meeting and pick them up on 10th.
I move to adjourn if that's in order.
Second.
Well, we're continuing, but yeah, we're looking to.
Continue on the 10th.
Okay, thank you all.
Thank you.